Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council meeting of January 15th of our New Year 2020. If I didn't say this before, Happy New Year, of course, to everybody that's here. And thank you for attending. And the time is 6:31. Pastor Peter, I believe you're going to lead us with an invocation. Thank you.
Join me if you will. The God and Father, we are blessed again to be able to ask that you would just bless and guide those who are going to be fulfilling their responsibilities and duties, not only tonight, but as leaders of this city. And we are grateful, as we reflect in the passion and many blessings that we enjoy here as residents, and looking forward to the dissipating rewards in store for us in this year 2020. We just pray that you would be to grant wisdom and that we, as residents of this wonderful community, would certainly embrace all the blessings that come with it and know that you have blessed us in this life. And we pray this in your name.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith, if you need to say a word.
Please hand over your word. Repeat after me. Pledge allegiance.
To the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unrivaled, individual, with liberty and injustice for all.
You have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Bonner.
Here.
Mayor Prochem Castillo.
Here.
Councilmember Green.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Mayor Aaron Krenz.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Do we have anything to report on a closed session?
Mayor, we have nothing to report on a closed session.
Okay, thank you. Mr. City Manager, do we have any changes in the agenda?
No, sir, we don't.
So far, so good. And I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
To approve the agenda.
Set yeah.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. A little bit few ceremonial matters. And I believe that... Is that me?
I'm sure.
Cyber space.
I can take a hint, thank you. But I'm going to ask Abby Soroki to please go up here, if she would, please. I can probably hear me scream. I've got a proclamation here, recognition of the athlete. I was fortunate enough to go to the lunch and have a preview of all this as I'm going to read. So bear with me. Abby Soroki is a resident of the City of Canyon Lake, California, an active student at the Mesquite Canyon High School. And whereas Abby had a field of GPA of 4.3 and wishes to continue her exceptional education by studying at Cal Poly University, sadly, it is not. Abby has been the captain of the varsity basketball team for two years and is also a member of Titans, the Price team, and varsity track. Abby is a leader of the ASV class in the student section at Mesquite Canyon. Abby intends to pursue a degree in traditional sciences. And Abby's hobbies include playing tennis, exploring new locations throughout Southern California. And Abby's future goal is to improve becoming a registered mathematician, working for professional sports teams or hospitals, and raising a family. All my work is in Abby. Abby here represents the outstanding and hard-working students at the Mesquite Canyon High School. Now therefore, being resolved that the City Council of the City of Canyon, New California, does hereby extend this proclamation to Abby. She is an example of opportunities and educations provided to all the students at the Mesquite Canyon High School this 15th day of January 2020. Congratulations, Abby, and I'm sure you'd like to say a few words.
Yeah, so I'm Abby Soroki. And at school, I'm mostly involved in basketball and ASV. I...we have six ASV classes at our school, and I run the six-period class, which is mostly focused on supporting athletes and doing the student section at games. So if you've ever been to a football game, I'm the one who's on the mic doing all the chants. And school has always been really important to me, and just I really wanted the most opportunities that I could have when I graduated. So I worked really hard in school, and I've gotten all As every semester. And yeah, so now I have 4.3 GPA, and I'm hoping I can go to Cal Poly once they accept me. And I want to thank my parents.
How we have a life. There we go. At this time, I would like to ask the head common to join me at the time. I'll be there just a moment. The head is a resident of Canyon Lake. Last week, she represented the city in Mrs. International Pageant. The head has been a resident here for about two years now. Prior to that, she lived in Norco, Corone area, for about 30 years. She's been married for 32 years, has three adult children and two grandchildren. She's an active member of this community. And at this time, I'd like her to share with you just a little bit about the experience that she's had in this pageant.
This is mine. Well, first, I just wanted to thank you and for the honor to represent my city. I was at the Miss California International Pageant this last weekend. And the international pageant, the system is, is to develop the...to develop...it was developed, excuse me, developed to showcase today's married women, their accomplishments, and their commitment to family, marriage, and being a positive role model. So just so you know, it was from 21 years old to 56. You have to be married at least six months and a resident of California. Interview was 50 percent, 25 was your evening gown, and 25 was fitness. What I really like about the international system is that you have to have a platform. So it really encourages young women to...and young married women to plug into their communities and have something that they really stand for. So for me personally, I do Go Red for Women, which is the American Heart Association's national movement to end heart disease and stroke in women. And one in five women suffer from heart disease, and I'm actually one of them. One in three will die of a heart attack. I always thought that heart disease was a man's disease. My father died at 47 of a massive heart attack while we were on vacation when I was seven. And...but actually, heart disease is the number-one killer of women. So and it's just really important to know your numbers. So as your Mrs. Canyon Lake, I'd like to share this year about Go Red for Women and about knowing your numbers. What is your cholesterol? What is your blood pressure? And then actually have your lipoprotein tested. Lipoprotein A, which is actually a precursor that I got from my father. So actually, in this room, I'm probably the most likely to have a heart attack. So looks are deceiving, and so it's really important to know your numbers. And then also to know the signs. The signs for a woman are totally different than they are for a man. So we may feel heartburn and being a mom and a woman and busy. Not that...I'm not saying that's...but you know, we might take heartburn medicine and go to sleep, and then we don't wake up in the morning. So and also maybe just feeling heavy in your chest or if we have jaw pain. So those are things to, as a woman, and to really, you know, we need to take care of ourselves, how we eat, how we exercise. I'm a grandma. I want to be here. I have a picture of my grandbabies in my kitchen, and that helps to keep me on track.
Thank you so very much. Mr. Timmy, this is a little bit shorter, right? This is recognition of your participation on behalf of the City of Canyon Lake and Mrs. California International Pageant.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Just thank you for that day.
For any need in the evening during the year, I'm always willing to participate and help in any way and any activity to help promote it.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thanks for the info, too. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I did a lot of exercise today.
Okay, next, we have Vicki Cassad, is that correct?
I'd like to introduce Pastor Municipal Clerk Vicki Cassad, who will be presenting the Certified Municipal Clerk flag, excuse me, and pin to our Deputy City Clerk Anna Salsita. Vicki is the Assistant City Clerk and Records Management Director for the City of Ontario. She received her designation as a Certified Municipal Clerk in 1999 and Master Municipal Clerk in 2009. She recently completed a two-year term as Director for Region Six of the City Clerks Association of California, proudly serves as their Mentor Program Chair. Excuse me, I just have a little bit of a dry throat. Vicki has received numerous awards throughout her career, including the CCAC City Clerk of the Year Award and the Pat Hammer Spirit Award. It is our honor and privilege to have her here tonight. So with that, I would like to let you make the presentation to Anna.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure who to face here, so sorry, guys. I don't mean to give you my bad side for the lake. Good evening, Mayor and Council, City Staff, and residents of Canyon Lake. I am Vicki Cassad, the Assistant City Clerk from Ontario, but most importantly, I'm here as the Mentoring Chair and a trainer in the City Clerk's programs. It is my honor to be here on behalf of the City Clerk's Association of California to...let me start over, to present this important certification to Anna. I want to take just a moment to explain the significance of this achievement. The Certified Municipal Clerk Program, or CMC, is designed to enhance the job performance of clerks in both small and large municipalities. To earn this designation, the municipal clerk must attend extensive education and have some pertinent experience in municipality. The CMC program prepares applicants to meet the challenges of the complex role of the municipal clerk by providing them with quality education in partnership with institutions of higher learning and state and national associations. There's a requirement to obtain certification of 110 points in combination of education and experience. This is equivalent to 600 hours of education, and it focuses on practical abilities, professionalism, leadership, and legal knowledge. Anna has shown her dedication to certification by taking courses when office coverage and attorney defense were available, in addition to performing her regular day-to-day duties of a city clerk, which are pretty much never-ending. At the same time, she completed a certificate program at UCR, so she is also a California professional municipal clerk. I commend this City Council and City Manager for giving her the support and funding to pursue and achieve these goals. I even remember a few were...you attended her graduation, so you guys are really good supporters. I give you great kudos for that. I've had the pleasure of working with Anna through all of her technical training for this certification and personally seeing the hard work that she has put into this effort. I've watched her grow personally and professionally, and she's this polished lady that you see before you tonight. And I'm so proud of you, and I congratulate you on these accomplishments and on all your hard work. You are the future of this profession and important, very important component in the future of Canyon Lake. So congratulations. The certificate does read, "From the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. We are recognized in Europe and a variety of countries. I can't remember all of them, but it is an international organization." So the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, who by confirms the title of Certified Municipal Clerk on Anna Salsita, CMC, who has completed the requirements prescribed by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks for certification, certified this 13th day of December 2019. So she's been certified clerk for a while now, but we're studying all of them. So congratulations to you, Anna.
This is your opportunity to say a few words besides the dull things that you have to read, everyone.
I just want to say thank you, the City Council, the City Manager, our Admin Services Manager, Mike. You all have been amazing, and the support that you have given me in the short time that I've been here has been amazing. I just...I'm so blessed to work with each and every one of you. I'm so thankful for all of you. And Vicki, your support, all of the city clerks that have helped me. I've met some amazing city clerks throughout this journey, and the City Clerk's Association, everybody's just been so good to me. So I thank you all, and I really appreciate you guys recognizing me tonight.
Mr. Mayor, if I may briefly, just wanted to say, from the City Manager's perspective and City Staff perspective, how thankful we already have Anna. What a fantastic job she does and kind of in line with this certification. You know, next month, we'll be presenting the mid-year budget review to the Council. We've talked about this informally, but I wanted to kind of officially announce that at that time, the City Manager will be recommending that we promote Anna to the position of City Clerk.
Great, thank you. Listen, I'm allowed to take some liberties and go off script for a couple of moments. I'm sure all of the Council would like to say something about Anna, so if I put you on the spot, I'm going to start with Councilmember Bonner.
Well, I've seen her grow so much in this several months you've been here now, and we appreciate the good work you're doing. So thank you for your being a part of the family of Canyon Lake.
Mr. Green.
My turn. Anna, I can say it's been a real joy to have you on staff. In the beginning, before we hired Chris, we had quite a challenge to try to sort through the documents and find things that city clerks know where they're buried, but you've got to dig a little. And with her charm and smile and great personality, she made the difficult times work through. So congratulations.
I'm so excited. I know I was able to go and witness you getting your diploma, and it was just such a great evening. And you know, for a lot of folks, you know, running a city like Canyon Lake with such a small staff, there's so many things behind the scenes that people aren't aware of. One word comes to mind, and that's organization. And I think that's exactly what she demonstrates day in and day out, is all the inner workings come through her, and I know Chris relies a lot on her and Mike as well. So we're so blessed to have you, and this finally happened. We're excited to be a part of it. Congratulations. You deserve every bit of it, and please don't leave us. That's all I'll say.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you. You are an immense resource for me personally. I appreciate your friendship. I think you just are heads and tails above what we could have ever hoped for in a city clerk. And despite what is in your job description, I know you do so much more, and we are so grateful.
I think everybody said just about everything that needs to be said, with the exception of one thing. Somebody's finally been able to keep me in line, and I certainly appreciate everything that you two put in. Because I...sometimes I drift a little bit from things that I'm supposed to do. Thank you so much, and we're all so very proud of you.
Thank you so much, all of you.
Thank you. Okay, the next thing I have is a really...it's an easy job, and I'm going to ask you... You.
Me?
Come out and appear, and it's a familiar spot for you.
Is this working? Yeah.
Yes.
I'm shy, so bear with me, please.
When did you get shy?
Last week.
This is Michael, of course, just honoring you for the time that you served. I'm sorry that you weren't able to complete your term, but you did more in a short time than most of us have done in a long period of time. Larry, this is for you, and we want to thank you for your service in the City of Canyon Lake and all that you've done for us. And I've turned this over to you, and I get to go back and sit down again.
I'll make this short. It's been a real experience, an honor, and a privilege to serve as the mayor of Canyon Lake. And the time that I was your mayor, we went through a lot of challenges and did a lot of things and got us to where we are today. And not just me, but our entire staff and our entire Council all pulled together. So you, as a community, have to be proud of where we are, what we're doing, and hopefully where we go. It's not the end, it's still the beginning, and we hopefully have a new vision for our upcoming year. And again, I want to thank all of you for coming, and thank you, Council, for this recognition. That's it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may say a couple of words.
Of course.
Again, it goes back to some of the inner workings that the community, you know, doesn't necessarily know what goes on behind the scenes. And when we were going through our City Manager change, Larry was the mayor, and I had the privilege of sitting on the committee to hire our new City Manager. And Larry was so committed that he was literally opening up City Hall, coming in at 7:30, 8:00 AM, organizing everything, getting all the documents ready for the incoming City Manager. And you know, it takes a lot of dedication to want to do that day in and day out, and his heart and service for this community was clear in those moments. You know, what's a blessing tonight is usually when we do these ceremonials, when we're exiting a mayor and letting someone else serve in that position, it's usually because of the election results, or they're retiring, or something like that. We're blessed because we get them, we still get them. So we're making decisions day in and day out, and you know, you've done great, and you're continuing to do great. So I just want to say thank you for being a mentor to me, and thank you for continuing to serve and step up, and I know I am blessed, and I have a lot to learn, so.
I'm going to try this again. Anybody have any comments?
Yeah, I wanted to say that there's a litany of accomplishments that Larry made in the nine-months he was the mayor of Canyon Lake. You want?
I'm sorry, that was bad.
But I want to outline four things that I thought was particularly special. He actually started when he was a mayor of Prochem, but also became the mayor in the amphitheater in the community, was delaying for months upon months, six months. And we were required the POA to pay some money that they wouldn't...we shouldn't have to have the POA to make. And there he jumped right in the middle of it and got organized, and within about two or three months, it was done. And now we have an amphitheater, and we had two concerts last summer, and we're having two this summer, so. Thank you, Larry, for making that happen. Thank you. Second of all, in May of 2017, I became the mayor, and I realized that Larry didn't have a stipend or an agency that was represented for the City of Canyon Lake. So I asked him to do RCA, Riverside Conservation. And he got to know the chair, Abram... Jonathan Ambrum. And he was, within three months, not only was he so active with the RCA, he also became on the Board of Directors for the City of Canyon Lake on the RCA. So that was like quite a bit in three months. And finally, in the last, about the last month, he was the mayor, maybe the month before that, he...we have an organization we're involved with called League of California Cities, and he became the Western Region Riverside County, who were doing the...representing the Western County and City of Canyon Lake. So thank you, Larry, for all your accomplishments. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I just want to say, you are inspirational. You are a picture of resiliency, and I'm honored to sit on top of you.
Thank you.
And certainly, I can only say thank you so much, Larry, because I know it was a trying time, and you made things a lot easier for things that should have been a lot more difficult. So I appreciate being able to pitch it for you, for the time that you were given. And here I sit again. But thank you for all that you've done for the community.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're going to have some reports now from EDMWD and RC Berkeley.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council staff, residents, and guests. First, I wanted to thank you for letting the Eltona Valley Municipal Water Circle Board and staff participate in the joint meeting that we shared with the Property Owners Association this week. I know what's been said before, it was a historical moment, and I was very pleased at the outcome. I really didn't have a lot of expectations, but I was very glad to see there was participation and a lot of dialogue. I also was pleased to hear that my board would like to do it again. So maybe not every time, but at least annually, to be able to give an update, and that we are truly looking forward to doing projects such as exploring the dredging of the East Bay or Main Lake and really working on some water quality improvements, which five years ago, we couldn't have those conversations. And since we've come to set an agreement with the settlement agreement and are moving forward, it's a very exciting time, I think. A lot of that goes to the City Council's leadership, to wanting to make sure that we're all working together. So I appreciate those efforts, and I applaud those and support those, and I'm really looking forward to moving that ball forward. Next month, I'm actually going to ask our staff to join us and kind of give you an update on the PFOA/PFOs issues. You receive a letter from this monthly telling you that we are at a level that the state mandates that we notify you. So we're really going to talk a little bit about what that means. Now, the state has not come out with any final regulatory language. So in some aspects, it may seem a little preliminary, but it's a very complex issue. So I've asked staff to join me next month to give a brief presentation on what it is, what we're doing about it, what are some long-term implications as relates to both the health of the lake and to drinking water quality. So I apologize because I'm not quite myself yet. I'm still fighting the plague that everybody seems to have. So thank you for the time this evening, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
I just have one question. You might want to explain to the audience what that acronym is, that the PFO.
Really? You want me to...the polyfluor...
Oh.
Really? Can we maybe do that later? On the website.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one thing, Director, I just want to say thank you so much for your service. You know, I had several people come up to me after Monday's meeting, and a lot of the success was because of your transparency. And a lot of people come up to me and say how on it you are when they have an issue, a question, a problem, whether it's social media, an email, a text message. You've done a very good job representing this. You've done a very good job representing this community, and I think this council, our POA board, our water board member coming together as it did on Monday was phenomenal. So whether we get a lot done or not, we came together, and that's the first step. So a lot of that success is because of your leadership and what you've done for this community. And I think for the first time in a while, you know, you put Canyon Lake on the map when it comes to some of our water issues, and you're helping us out. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Seriously. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Do we have any announcements from the Canyon Lake Chamber of Commerce?
Well, of course.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Mayor Pro Tem, city council members, Mr. Men, Mr. Sado, Mr. Graff. My name is Gina Bell, for those who don't know me, and I'm here tonight as the president of the Chamber of Commerce.
The president of the Chamber of Commerce. Congratulations.
Thank you, I think. Talk to me in about a couple of months. But I just wanted to take a moment, is that me? To update you all on the current status of the chamber. Myself, along with Jenny Aaron Krantz, who's our treasurer, and David Gagnon, who is our secretary, will be working together over the next couple of months to reorganize, re-energize, and rebrand the chamber. We certainly look forward to working with the city in a collaborative manner, in a new year with a new perspective. So thank you. And I guess I'm supposed to tell you, remind you about our golf tournament on March 21st as well. So thank you.
Are you in installation?
No, sir, we're not. We are once again reorganizing the chamber, which would include no new directors. So we're not having an installation dinner this year. We will install officers sometime during the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Public safety update. We have some information at our disposal here. If I could have any oral... Good. Sheriff was first.
How are you guys all doing today? Before I get into the lengthy stats, and let me introduce myself to those who haven't met yet. Sam Morvich, Lieutenant at the Fire Station, Riverside County Sheriff's Department. Nineteen years now, and that which has been various ranks for the Fire Station. So I've taken over the duties of overseeing law enforcement personnel for the Canyon Lake Fire Station ever since Lieutenant Matt Sims got promoted to Captain Matt Sims, also at the Fire Station. So before I leave, I'll make sure to pass out business cards for anyone that has my line, my email. With that said, getting into the stats. Our label January stats been an actuality from November. There's two thefts, and both times the victim and the suspect. Pretty minimal at that. And what they can note, you might see, is the citations. I believe after speaking with city staff, it has a lot to do with our particular deputy partnering up with the POA enforcement and doing a lot more of the civil citations on top of our criminal citation, our fractional citations. And we're hoping to see we can expand that and see, we're going to kind of view and see if it'll be successful. If there's any questions, if not, this is the stats.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Next, we have the fire department.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and the staff. Josh Bishop is high chief for Canyon Lake Fire Department, and the stats are in front of you. They are the stats for the month of December, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I have a question.
Absolutely.
Okay, on the 10-minute over response. Engine 5 was the closest to Treasure Island?
Yep.
Or why? I mean, that's weird, right? Isn't Engine 5 down the...
Engine 5 is Quail Valley Station. They actually are, depending on where resources are at, I believe Engine 60 was assigned to a different incident. So Engine 5 would have been the next closest unit to that call. We pulled up the stats. Engine 5 runs about, or you can actually look at the stats, but quite a few calls, not necessarily Treasure Island, but within the city of Canyon Lake.
I just, you know, I figure since Treasure Island's pretty close to our...
To 60, absolutely. But if one engine is on a call, then we would send the next closest unit to that response.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
It would have been included, but there were no significant incidents for the month of December for the city of Canyon Lake.
Thank you.
Special code enforcement. I think that too, Gina.
So we had 15 new business license applications submitted, approved, and issued in December. So the businesses are still coming. Obviously, we issued a 2020 license since they were applying in December. The decals are really taking off. People are utilizing them. We have had people stating that the POA is not giving them access and entry through the gate without their business license present. So that was amazing and a wonderful feat. This morning, we had somebody complaining about everybody should have to have one to get in the gate. And we got to finally say, guess what? That's the direction we've been going, and it's really working. And he goes, well, they've been saying that for 20 years. And I said, well, we're on year 30 coming up here, so we've got this down. So thank you so much for your support with that and for meeting with the POA to help us, because our biggest complaint is, well, I have to pay mine, but they don't have to pay theirs. So now it's an even playing field, so it's good for everybody. Our runoff violations, we only had two. We didn't have that much rain, but it's significant enough that when it does happen, because everything just ends up in the lake, they've been doing a really good job staying on top of those inspections. So if you have any questions, BLM was still busy. Jeep was slip-sliding around but having a good time. And it's clear, no campers.
Any off-road issues with the BLM? Because, you know, it's wet, and vehicles get stuck, and I know they're still out playing.
Not for our Jeep.
Jeep's doing good, right?
It's doing good.
Okay.
Yeah.
I love it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gina.
Thank you so much.
I think we have anything here for animal friends? In order, do we have anybody from Animal Friends of the Valley?
Mr. Mayor, the city clerk tells me that we received a notice from Animal Friends that they won't typically be able to send people to the meetings, but they will provide us the stats. So we'll make sure to send those out.
Starting next month?
Yes, I think starting last month, yeah.
Because it's after hours.
It's after hours.
Okay, we're going to move on to public comments, and our clerk is going to read that.
Thank you. Any person wishing to address the city council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the city, whether or not it appears on the agenda, is asked to complete a speaker request form available on the back counter. The completed form is to be submitted to the city clerk prior to an individual being heard by the city council. The city council may impose a three-minute limitation upon each person. Any person commenting on an item on the consent calendar or on items not on the agenda may do so now. Any person commenting on a business item or public hearing will be heard at the time that particular item is scheduled on the agenda. The Brown Act does not allow the city council to discuss matters not on the agenda. Therefore, in response to any person addressing the city council on items not on the agenda, the city council may only do the following. Refer the matter to staff, ask for additional information, or request a report back, or give a very limited factual response. I have one card. I just wanted to get some clarification on the agenda item number you wish to speak, Mrs. Danielle Tripp. Is it item number five?
Yes, it is.
Or is it on the moratorium, which is item number 10?
Oh. Okay. And your address to do a short-term rental.
Or do you wish to speak on?
Short-term rental would be item 10.
Okay. So item number 10?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Thank you. We'll hear your comments at that time.
Thank you.
No other requests at this time?
No other cards at this time.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. Mr. Attorney, can you give me some advice on this, too? I want to make sure that we can do this. I want to make a motion in regards to adopting the consent calendar with allowing me to abstain item number five and accepting the rest.
So I think that when something's on the consent calendar like that, it's perfectly fine for, to approve the consent calendar and note your abstention. I'd recommend that you not make the motion over the second, though.
Okay.
Just for the clerk's ease. But yes, I think that you can simply note your abstention on, I believe it's item number five.
Okay, so, okay, so you'd rather me retract my motion?
I prefer that.
Okay, I will retract my motion, but I will make a note to council and our city attorney that I will be abstaining from item number five.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll read the consent calendar statement, if that's okay. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered...
Excuse me, one second. Is, Councilman, who has a question?
It's going to be on the demands and claims, and it's just a question for clarification.
Okay.
Okay, and it would be on page 22, and it's Elsinore Water for the medium 1,056. And I don't know if that's normal, Mike, it's page 22. We're in the wet time of the year. I'm just wondering if we've got a irrigation issue. And also 371 for the fire station, it seems a little high. I don't think they use that much water, because we went to dry landscaping. But that's a normal build for us for the medium.
I think we questioned that last month also of the fire station.
Yeah. It's just... I'm sorry, what page was it? Page 22. 22. 22, and it's the 1, 2, 3, the third item and the fourth item down. I'm not seeing it on page 22 for some reason. It's on your claims and demands. Yeah. About, yeah. It's the check numbers that are listed. What's the check number again, sorry? Check, it would be, looks like EFT 93. It should be, start with like a 25. And I don't see a 25. These are all E numbers. This is EFT 93, EFT 94. So the amounts that you're referring to, there's one for 250? One's for 371, which is fire station, and one's for 1,05653 for the medium. And we're in the wintertime. Yep. And we've had, we had rain in those months. So I'm wondering if the irrigation's still running, or we've got a leak again, or some other issue. That's all. Irrigation has been off for the wintertime. However, just prior to that, we had some valve leaks and damages that had to be repaired, and I think that's what that cost is. The 371, I'm not sure about. I need to... And they're both in the same time period, March 28th to November 26th? And I just happened to, because the reason I bring the fire station, because we had a problem with the meter out there before. And so, that's all. Just to confirm, we don't have a problem? Yeah, nothing I'm aware of. I know of the valve leaks that had to be repaired in the medium on Redwood Canyon Road. But for the most part, and we did have some spikes in water use at that time because of that. So I'm wondering if it has to do with that. Does it give you a timeframe as far as the date of what that time period was for? The time period is from 10/28/19. So it's on October. And it's the end of October through November. And I thought we also enrolled in that hot list for EBMWD, which gives us a notification of, we're exceeding our water use. We did. Yeah, and we get those, and I get those. So, yeah, that has to do with the timeframe of those valve leaks that we had those issues. Okay. And those have to do with repairs. The 371, I'm not too sure. I could probably look into that a little bit further. Normally, the cost for fire station 60 is 250. So when you're saying 371, it might be... 371. There could have been some repairs that might have been done. I'm not too sure about, but I'd be kind of looking into it for you. Okay, because I know they're, I mean, they're not flowing a lot of water. I mean, it's fire station, guys get showers and stuff, but, yeah. Just to check. Yeah, the water use for the most part is pretty minimum there at the station. It's not a whole lot. And again, like I said before, pump station has kind of been down for the last few months because of the wintertime, so, yeah.
And Mike, did we get reimbursed on that?
For the leakage that we had last year?
Yeah.
We did a little bit over about $2,100.
Yeah, because I remember that was a big one, and they were actually pretty good. Usually, futures can improve, you know, so.
And that's what I did. You know, I did have to give some information, yeah, on repairs and things that, because that's what we had. We had a major leak out there.
Right.
But the entire, just so you know, the entire usage of water this year has been way less than it has been before for years.
Yeah, that's good. That's good. Good catch, Larry.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Did I interrupt you a moment ago?
I think at this point, we can entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Okay.
Make the motion.
Second. We have a motion to second. With the exception of one. All in favor?
Aye.
Just for clarification, can I make my aye also? I mean, it's noted, right? Were you having the record?
I'm sorry, we need to do a roll call vote on this, so we'll go down the line.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
What point of clarification do I make?
I'd recommend saying aye with the exception of...
Thank you.
Item 5, which I'm abstaining.
Aye with the exception of item number 5, which I'm abstaining.
Thank you. And Mayor Aaron Krantz?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we don't have any full consent calendar items at the moment. Business items. Number seven. This would be Terry Shea, I believe. Are you going to introduce this?
I'm. So I mean, wants to deliver your staff report. Good evening, your honorable mayor, city council. What we have, we had a presentation to the Finance Audit Committee about a month ago, and it's software called Gov Invest. And as you realize, CalPERS is one of our biggest liabilities, and the information we get is two years old always. And so this company called Gov Invest will give you real-time your CalPERS liability. So when we do the budget, we can, we can put in the new salaries, we can put in the raises, we can lower the discount rate, we can do all kinds of stuff. I use the software in Rocky Hills, so every time we give a raise or any budget or projections, we plug in the salaries into the software. So what I'm going to have to do is have Jason from Gov Invest demo the software real quick. And it was easy enough that I could use it, and so that's pretty easy software, so.
Not sure if anybody's noticed that nice television screen that we have on the wall, which is permanent now.
Need to log in here all the time. How's everybody doing tonight?
Good.
Good.
Do you need a call for your team? Jason's scratching.
You stood? I'm never gonna make it happen, bud. Try to get it up there when I can, but...
It's a long old password.
Yeah. Is that real? Is that really real? It was one of our developers decided to make that.
And you were there?
No. I've got it on my laptop here. All right, well, loading here, but thank you for having us. My name's Jason Huck, I'm with Gov Invest, and what we provide for a lot of agencies and municipalities across the U.S. is a software that helps agencies understand the impact of various decisions they're making towards pensions, the unfunded liability and the costs. So with, you know, various details, different funding policies and mechanisms. Most of you know that pensions are a moving target to try to reach a fully funded status, or a healthy funded ratio, as we call it. So our company's built a software that you can actually stress-test various scenarios, help educate, and have a more realistic picture of what's changing for your unfunded liability and those costs. There's a number of different key controls. And so what we've been able to do is, for various membership, we're looking at details for the city. This is not Canyon Lake's profile. This is just a demo platform, but it breaks... This is not Canyon Lake's profile. This is just a demo platform. But it breaks down the membership status for a pension plan by the active, separated, transferred, and retired members. So with classic pension plans, what you're typically looking at is higher costs. The enactment of PEPRA, the Public Employee Pension Reform Act, has now kind of leveled off a lot of the costs. However, we're still seeing liabilities grow with market adjustments like investment returns for the stock market, salary increases, workforce adjustments like growth in number of employees. If any of those, you know, kind of key buckets of assumptions change, it creates that moving target. And so our software helps to instantly kind of analyze those impacts. So, you know, just if we wanted to run a quick scenario, the graph here is broken out into the liabilities component, which shows the market value of the assets for the city that they've put into the plan. Now, the delta between that is how the unfunded liability is growing, and that's that red area, which kind of is offset from the total accrued liability. So with that, you know, we wanted to show, you know, the city's unfunded liability grew about $60,000 last year. And that's kind of a standard process because CalPERS, the state retirement fund, has changed their assumptions. And they dropped the discount rate, the assumed rate of return over time, it dropped down, which means the cost for the city and the liability goes up. So, you know, the city wanted to learn how to stabilize the rates or look at different tools to manage this growing issue, then that's what our software does. So I can drop down various tools. Over here, we're looking at the discount rate from, in 2016, it was 7.35. And then in 2017, 7.25. Now they're at 7%. And the fear is that they're going to drop it even more. So what I can instantly do is just click on a comparison line, project the years out for the software out to, let's say, 26. And this is analysis that you would have to hire a consultant to do, an actuary. And that takes weeks to months for them to turn back a report. It's expensive. Our software does it instantly for you. So if I drop that six, you know, that discount rate long-term to 6.5%, somewhat conservative, you can see that the, the liability, there's a hairline that goes up. But if we turn over to the cost, the impact for this agency is $3.5 million for a half a percent drop long-term. So if we jump into, you know, investment returns, say next year, investment return doesn't meet the minimum 7%, we're able to, you know, let's say it's, you know, 5%. You would see that 3.5 go up a little bit higher. So now it's 4%. And that's only 2% lower than their assumed investment return for one year. So that's where our software kind of helps you analyze is decisions you're making towards funding the plan, stabilizing your rates for the budget, helping educate staff, and, you know, obviously counsel, and then also the community for understanding, you know, other initiatives that you guys are looking at. So that's kind of the high level. There's some other tools and tricks that, or not tricks, but tools that you can kind of toggle on and off to stress test. But it's, what we found is pictures tell a lot. And most of the time, what we're looking at is agencies understand the normal cost moving forward for their current employees. They don't understand that this is the, the mark that the retirement system's kind of developed over the years with the markets not returning what we thought. And then the changes in life expectancy, people living longer, you know, salary increases not matching up with the assumptions the actuaries assume. And we end up with the unfunded liability, kind of this little mountain. And you always ask the question, how do we get to these expensive costs? Well, they're not always right front and center. So our software helps tackle those, those issues. So I hope that's helpful. If there's any questions, happy to, to answer.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Do we have any other comments on this item?
We have no public comments.
All right, thank you. Do I need a motion to second to approve item 7?
I make a motion to approve, uh, the seventh number seven.
Have a second?
Yeah.
This is a roll call vote, please.
Councillor Bonner?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Castillo?
Aye.
Councillor Green?
Aye.
Councillor Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Krems?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve item number seven.
Thank you. Moving on to item number eight.
Yes, Mayor. At the last regular city council meeting, the city council approved the 2020 committee and agency assignments. The mayor was appointed as the trustee on the North West Mosquito and Vector Control District Board of Trustees. They have sent us a letter letting us know that we needed to specify a term. So we need to specify whether two years or four years. So at this time, I need the council to give me direction as to whether they would like the mayor to serve as the trustee for either two years, a two-year term, or a four-year term.
So just, just for clarification, it's, it's, it's a little weird because giving someone a two-year term when we're approaching an election year, I don't quite understand that. You, you can't, you know, for any one of us, unless, you know, you just got sworn in and it was a, you know, you're a four, you're sitting a four-year term, but we're all, you know, looking at next year differently. So how does that work if, if...
I can answer. I can tell you that some of the directors on the vector control are not elected officials.
That's why. Okay.
Yeah, one gentleman's been on there for 47 years, I believe.
Well, then there you go. I didn't realize it was seen differently, like a regional board is, you couldn't do that at a regional level with, you know, any of the boards that we sit on. So if that's the case, I'll make the motion that we, we allow Jordan, you know, a two-year, if they need that language, absolutely, 100%.
I'll second, I'll second there.
We have a motion to second for a two-year term. I guess this, this is not a roll call.
No, we just need an all in favor.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you again.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number nine.
Yes, that one is mine as well.
Yes.
This is going to be the approval of resolution number 2020-03. This is amending the Conflict of Interest Code of the City of Canyon Lake, and it's repealing resolution number 2018-24. The City of Canyon Lake does this on a two-year, we do this every two years. However, as we start adding positions or removing positions, it's good to just update the Conflict of Interest Code. In this particular case, we have added a position on here. We've added our senior, senior special enforcement officer. We've added that as a position. And we have also broken up the city clerk from the city manager. Those are really the only, and the city treasurer, excuse me. We've also added some language in there just that kind of gives us a better definition of the term consultants. And then we've also added language in there that allows our fire chief and our police chief to provide copies to the city clerk's office of the documents that they provide to the county without having to submit an assuming office or a leaving office, you know, as they change. There are basic changes, and so at this time, staff's recommending approval of resolution number 2020-03.
Any questions from the, from the council, if you'd say? No question? Any welcome?
I was just going to make the motion that we approve this as item number nine. Second.
We have a motion to second. This requires a roll, a roll call.
Yes, thank you. And for the record, we have no public comment on this item. Councillor Bonner?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Castillo?
Aye.
Councillor Green?
Aye.
Councillor Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Krems?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve resolution number 2020-03.
Okay, thank you. I believe the city attorney is going to introduce this next item. Is there urgency ordinance?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. As we were going through the single-family rental inspection program, one of the items that came from the city council was short-term rentals. Numerous nuisance activities have been associated with those throughout the city. The city council wanted the opportunity to explore whether regulation or prohibition of that activity was appropriate. Fundamentally, a short-term rental is a commercial use that's operating in a residential zone. It's effectively a hotel next door, which is very different from month-to-month or long-term leases, which are residential in character. And so the recommendation from our office at that time was not to include that prohibition in the single-family rental inspection program, but to bring a separate moratorium to prohibit that use and allow the city manager and staff time to explore single-family rentals, what kind of regulatory program is appropriate for the community. So that's what you have in front of you. You have an urgency ordinance, which will establish a moratorium. That means as soon as this is approved by a four-fifth vote, immediately, short-term rentals, the operation or the establishment would be prohibited in the City of Canyon Lake. You'll also be getting a public hearing at your next council meeting, because this moratorium is only good for 45 days. And then it has to be extended for up to 10 months, 15 days at a public hearing. Because we only meet once a month, and because we're meeting on a different day than we normally will, that means you're going to have a public hearing within about two weeks to extend it. I don't think the city manager is capable of investigating this very serious issue in the next two weeks. If anyone could, your city manager could. I, I, I don't think it's, it wouldn't lose power. So the, the recommendation is that the, the council introduce and, and adopt the urgency ordinance by a four-fifth vote this evening. And then you'll be getting a, a public hearing to extend it further at your next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Council, any questions?
I have a lot of questions. I got a lot of questions, but I want to hear public comment first, if that's okay.
We can? Are there any public...
Yes, we have a few cards. We'll start with Danielle Tripp.
Good evening, council. I am Danielle Tripp. I'm in my 19th year as a resident here in Canyon Lake, and I finished successfully raising five children through the Lake Elsinore School System, through college, and even some working on PhDs in Harvard right now. But I am here also to share a comment from a fellow neighbor and short-term rental person such as myself. And he's not able to be here in, in attendance, but he's asking to come and share his thoughts. And his thoughts are very similar to mine. But he has put it in a letter. This is from John C. Howard. He states here, Dear City of Canyon Lake, this letter is highlighting the background, history, and experience I have had with my property in Canyon Lake, California. As a single-family residence located on Vacation Drive, he purchased his property in 2003, spent nearly one and a half years rebuilding the property, moved into the property primarily as his primary residence in July 04, and lived in the area until the end of 2005. And since that time, he, you know, has made this his second home. He's had several long-term renters stay at the property, and one tenant was noted for three years. The property has been a life-altering and remarkable property rental for rental periods in between two nights and 30 nights, and for several years. Take note that any rentals less than 30 nights was during the time that he was not aware of any Canyon Lake POA short-term rental policy. For many years, the large property vacation rental websites were not something that cities and municipalities really were aware of. And this was something that was just growing in the industry, and the cities weren't so aware of them until more recently. As time has gone on, they have become increasingly more visible. And fast forward to now, the year 2020, he's had a 10 and a half-year-old son now, and he's, you know, made the property in Canyon Lake an integral foundation of his son's life. This is in several ways, first primarily renting the property in Canyon Lake has been a vital part of income, which is used to support himself and his son. He also states that his son has had every one of his birthday parties at their home in Canyon Lake, and they have an annual family week with families from all over the country. Additionally, he's taught his son, the 10-year-old now, to water ski and waveboard during summertime in Canyon Lake since he was six. And those activities have been a foundation for him as a person, as he has also, the child has become an exceptional athlete in other sports, so, such as baseball and lacrosse. Learning those water sports at an early age builds a high degree of confidence for his, his life. Now, John, Mr. Howard, he feels it's imperative that the City of Canyon Lake now know that there are many opportunities to rent to families in need of relocation housing, medium-term work projects, or relocation agencies for insurance companies for rental periods of two nights to 30 nights. Specifically, rentals of one week or more have many opportunities all through the year, especially during the summer. Now, Mr. Howard's goal in writing this letter is to urge the City of Canyon Lake to recognize and consider the families that depend on rentals for periods of less than 30 nights as a vital part of their income and their ability to retain and stay in their property. He thanks you very much for your time and consideration. And again, I too am a short-term renter or even longer-period renter. I was able to continue staying in my home after a divorce and finished raising five children on my own because I was able to rent my property. I, all the time that I've done that, I've still remained in the property at the same time, which is a little different. But it's been very significant for me to be able to have this additional income to maintain, you know, my enjoyment of my property. And I thank you so much for your time. Thank you so much.
Next, we have Jeffrey Frye.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. I think I actually misunderstood. I'm actually a tenant myself here in Canyon Lake on a long-term lease. And when I saw the, the agenda, I wanted to find out kind of the information on the, what's on the, the agenda for, what it was going to be for long-term. It sounds to me more like the issue is the short-term rental, so I think I can go ahead and withdraw my public comment. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, I did just want to address it. This only affects rentals of fewer than 30 days, so not typical month-to-month or longer tenancies.
Thank you. Next, we have Janice McPherson.
Good evening. Actually, I think my question might have just been clarified. I also read the report via email, and I just saw the short-term rental policy. And the property that we own, we have been in compliance, we've always had the ability to do the vacation rental through Airbnb or VRBO, and we advertise it for 30 nights or greater. So I just wanted to clarify that is going to still be acceptable, and we're not moving forward to eliminating that altogether. Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We have no more cards.
Yes, thank you. Few questions. So I'm sure some of you are aware, I know that our Mayor Proton and I had a conversation a little bit with our city manager. Temecula just passed our ordinance last night. They had a 11 o'clock city council meeting, and it's pretty strict. They're doing a, a, basically zero tolerance to Airbnb, VRBO, $1,000 fine if, if caught, you know, the whole nine yards. So looking at this ordinance, number 10, what are we looking at in regards to penalties or tracking this, or if, if a property is, is found online, how is that going to be associated? Who's going to enforce this? Is it our code enforcement? Who's going to handle the online monitoring? So let's just take it, the first question's simple. Is there going to be fees associated? What are we looking at here?
That's something that we're going to study with, with the city manager. There are a lot of different models. Temecula's experience is similar to the experience I had on the last short-term rental regulatory ordinance that I wrote, where people essentially took houses and turned them into party mansions over the weekend. And, you know, people, that's their neighborhood. And, and there was, you know, serious issues with that. So the, the ordinances, I mean, when you say strict, I mean, I think they, they expect it to operate as a residential property. And that's usually what... And that's usually what all the ordinances are sort of looking for. And there are significant penalties in some of the communities, because, you know, when you're talking about some of these, they are businesses, and we tend to levy higher fines against businesses, because otherwise they have a profit motive just to go on by them. So I think, you know, depending on sort of what the conversation that the council ends up having when we bring a proposed ordinance forward, I think you can expect to see regulations that relate to, you know, parking on the property, excessive noise, picking up litter, number of occupants that are in it. Or you might end up seeing a proposed ordinance that simply says, "Look, these are just incompatible with the residential zones that we have in the community, and they should be prohibited." So it's going to be something that we have to study, but I anticipate if you do have a regulatory ordinance, it would be pretty strict.
You know, as we're, is this the format to have those discussions now, or should we wait for the reading?
That's perfectly fine, if you want to have the discussion about what your initial thoughts are. I'm sure it'll help the city manager, as we start drafting an ordinance to bring back to you.
I wasn't, you know, part of the, you know, the business item that I had to abstain from, so, you know, I was able to watch the discussion and whatnot, but I think utilizing this time to my colleagues to have this discussion now, so we can save some staff time on how we want this ordinance to read and look. I know that from my experience, and Jordan, yours is even better, the POA's been dealing with this for quite some time. It's been a serious issue. We have neighbors that have called in multiple times, because there's music that is playing at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning and echoing throughout the entire lake, and these are just random folks who are using an Airbnb, and it's caused some serious issues. Don't even get me started with the gate problems, and then utilizing the facilities as well as a guest. So my question in the seriousness of the ordinance that we might propose tonight, or at least have discussion about, are we dealing with strictly Airbnb situations? Is that how we're going to kind of customize the ordinance? Or are we looking at folks who are renting out a room, who are living there, who are occupying the property as well, and they have an extra room, and they want to get some income, so therefore they're going to rent it out for 500 bucks a month, or 28 days, or three weeks?
I can tell you that, again, in the last regulatory ordinance I did on short-term rentals, what you just brought up was a concern of the council. Their community's a little different than Canyon Lake, but they did have a significant number of older residents who, empty nesters, they had extra rooms, and so the owner was present at all times and was renting, and the council split that off from the owner not being present.
See, that's how I would want that to read, too.
And I already have language for that, because that's exactly.
Because I think that's important, especially in our community. You know, we have such a diverse age group, and some of these older folks depend on that room being rented out to almost a caregiver or a situation where they, you know, get help, and I would hate to, you know, eliminate that opportunity, because we're trying to fix the bigger issue at hand, which is Airbnb and some of these online rentals that is causing a disturbance in the community. So I think having that noted in the ordinance is going to be extremely important. The other thing is, is how do we go about, you know, putting a fine on the property? Is it done in the tax roll? I know that the POA implement fees that are due at the end of each month, and I think sometimes they get up to $400 or $500, and those dues add up. How are we going to implement fees in regards to, you know, the city? Is it going to be done with a lien on the property? Or how do we go about doing that if this particular property keeps on renting online and we have proof of that?
So I think that the general enforcement tactic with most cities with these is to do a sort of progressive fine program, just like we do for any other code enforcement matter. Obviously, we make sure that it's pretty robust, especially when you're looking at it, operating the business, and you're looking at the seriousness of the violations. We might want to give code enforcement a little bit more discretion to go hard very quickly if we're having very serious issues that aren't being responded to. I can tell you that one of the most effective regulatory measures that some communities have is a requirement that they register before they start doing this with the city, and they provide local contact information. So the concern that I've seen in other communities is, it's, you know, somebody who's in LA who owns the property, and they're renting it out. If we have a problem, we call them, they can't get here to take care of their property. And so usually it's, you know, we need to know who the property owner is, we need a local contact person who can get here within half an hour to resolve issues. And I think that that sort of communication and that proactive stuff is usually going to be your best defense, because once you enact a regulatory program, people understand that you're serious about it.
Right.
You'll get a lot of good actors, and then you can go after the few bad actors with the typical code enforcement tools we have available to us.
So with this ordinance, the way that you're describing it tonight, is it looking at completely banning Airbnb and the use of that completely? Or if they, if they're compliant with the certain ordinance that we put in place, they're still allowed to advertise their property online? Because like what you had just mentioned, if they do, and they have, they meet these criterias of having someone 20, 30 minutes away that can respond to an issue or a concern, so are we, how's the ordinance going to be read in that regards?
So I don't want to preempt the city manager's investigation and his recommendation. The moratorium provisions require that the city manager investigate this issue and come back with recommendations on regulations. I'm obviously going to be helping him pretty extensively with that, but I don't want to jump the gun. And I also just wanted to, I know we sort of shorthand, we say Airbnb. I also want to make it very clear that we are not singling out any particular business
Right.
or business provider. We're talking about a specific structure where it's rented for fewer than 30 days. I think that, you know, we need to see what the issues are that are happening in the community to make that recommendation.
Right.
I can tell you that a lot of communities come down on the position of, we're either going to allow only the owner-occupied ones to occur, and we're going to prohibit the rest, or if we are going to allow it, we're going to put a severe time limit on the number of days per year that such a thing can go forward, so that it's not just a year-round, all-the-time business. Maybe it's a supplemental thing, you know, maybe during the summer. But whichever form it ends up taking, we're going to bring alternatives, because fundamentally, it's going to be the council's decision which way you want to go. So if the council wants us to investigate it and bring back a couple of policy alternatives, it's pretty straightforward. Most of these ordinances have been written by others. I'm not going to be, you know, going by hand on this one, so.
Right, and that's, you know, and I'm only one person, and, you know, my concern, or at least looking into this, is Temecula made a very serious stance on this. Zero tolerance. I mean, you know, it was, it was clear as day, and they have a lot going on in Temecula with the wineries and whatnot, so it's a huge, you know, nut that they're trying to crack by this. Is this what's coming? Is this what's coming regionally? Are other cities having this conversation? Is it becoming such an issue now that people and cities are going to have to start doing what Temecula did? I would ask Mr. City Manager, what's your thoughts on that? Are you waiting to do some more research to figure it out, or what's your insight?
Sure. Well, first of all, yeah, we need to do some more research, but the initial thought was, look, this has been an issue in Canyon Lake for some time. It's been an issue the POA has been grappling with for some time. And in the spirit of cooperation with the POA, we thought this was something we could do to be helpful. We have enforcement capabilities that they don't have in this area. In looking at it, just initially, and again, we'll have to do some more research into it, but in general, I would say the feeling is that the short-term vacation rental use is really not compatible in Canyon Lake. That's not to say it's not appropriate anywhere, but, you know, for a number of reasons, in Canyon Lake, I mean, it's the way that Canyon Lake developed, many of the homes are very close together. We have, you know, street parking issues as it is, noise issues, and it's been an ongoing issue here. So I think the complete prohibition was what we originally had in mind. Also, thinking about enforcement, we need to really give careful thought to how we're going to approach enforcement with the resources that we have. So we don't want to draft something that's so complicated and has so many different caveats that it becomes onerous in terms of enforcement. So one of the advantages to having a complete prohibition is that then we can send that ordinance to Airbnb and the others and say, "Look, this is prohibited here. We should not be seeing any listings on your website in Canyon Lake." And we can enforce that way. So again, we have to do more research, but those are the initial thoughts.
Oh, the last thing I'll say about this, this council, I'm so proud to be a part of it, because we worked so hard to work with the POA. We really have. And, you know, I'm speaking, you know, for myself here, but I think it's important that as we write this ordinance, we keep them in mind, because they've been having an issue too. I don't know if that means putting language in there with the POA, whether it's enforcing or helping or operating with or being transparent with or whatever it might be, but I do truly believe that this year, last year, we've worked together, and this is an opportunity that we can come, because we're getting, like you said, Mr. City Manager, we're getting a ton of complaints from the POA, kind of saying, "Please help us here. We're doing all we possibly can. We're trying to make the residents happy." And I think this is the time where the city can come together with the POA and hit one out of the park and do what's best for the community. That's all I'll say on it.
Thank you. Any other comments? And I entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
This is a motion to approve, here, number 193. You can roll call, please.
Yes, just to reiterate what the city attorney said, in order for this to be adopted and become effective immediately, we will need a four-fifths majority vote on this. Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Mayor Prochance Steel?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Prince?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the urgency ordinance number 193.
Number 11, the city manager is ready to introduce this.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Well, we last took up a goal-setting in May of last year, May 8. And so here we are, what, seven months or so later. And we want to get into a cycle of doing this every January, so we're setting the goals at the beginning of each year. So the list of goals that we had for 2019, we had kind of shortened timeframe to get them done and work on them, but I think, as you'll see here, we've made quite a bit of progress. Wanted to just start off by talking about why we're doing this. So this should be an annual exercise. Once we adopt the goals, there'll be a guide for the council and staff to ensure that the time and resources are allocated in a manner consistent with the council's shared vision for the city. We'll do this at the beginning of each year. You'll see here that we have a matrix that reviews the status of the city council's previously adopted goals, so we'll look at the progress that we've made there. And in no order of priority, we'll present today 14 potential goals for 2020 for discussion and possible adoption. So before we get into the goals, just a reminder about the vision statement that has been established for the city. And I'll just read it out here. The vision of the city of Canyon Lake is to be a city that provides a quality of life that makes Canyon Lake the premier place to live in Southern California. It's a pretty ambitious vision, but we're a unique community that I think has the building blocks to achieve just that, and we're moving in that direction. So let's move on to, this is kind of hard to read up on the screen, but I'll read through these. 18 goals were set in 2019. We did quite a bit of work on most of them, so let me go down one by one, and this is how we kind of keep ourselves accountable. We'll go through and make sure we're following through on the goals that we set for ourselves. The first one had to do with our public safety contracts. As we've talked about, we're operating in a structural budget deficit, which was created by the escalating costs of public safety, both our contracts with the county for fire and police services. We've been spending quite a bit of time evaluating alternatives to police and fire contracts with the county. We brought on consulting company ESCI, who is in the process of conducting a study to examine the feasibility of starting and operating a municipal fire department. On the police side, we've joined with six other cities in a contract with company Citygate for a study to determine the feasibility of forming a new police department under a joint powers agreement. In addition, meetings are scheduled now with the city of Menfe to discuss the potential of working with them in their new police department. So we've been working diligently on this goal. Goal number two was to update our computers, our phones, our data storage, and records retention. We've completed upgrades to the computers and phones. We have two computers left, two workstations that we still need to upgrade. We held off on those because they were newer than the other computers, but we're going to have to do that probably pretty quickly, because their operating systems are, as of this month, no longer supported. So we'll probably have to upgrade those here in the next couple of weeks, and that will be done. Our updated records retention schedule has been adopted. Laser fiche is under contract for the digitization of documents. We have a kickoff meeting with them tomorrow, and scanning of documents should begin next week. Our new IT company, SynTech, is in place, and one of our next big projects is to move the physical servers to the cloud, and we hope to be in that process by the end of February. Adopt and implement updated fees, this is the third goal. This has been complete. There was a little bit of a delay, because we were instituting the new iWork software. Once that software was up and running fully, then we were able to implement all of the fees, and we're starting to see that revenue come in now, has been for the past few months, and it's making a difference. Goal number four was to implement the fire code enforcement program, also referred to as the life safety inspections. This program applicable fees were approved by the city council. Enforcement staff have completed their training programs for that and are working on certification, and final details are being discussed with county fire on implementation of that program. We hope to have that up and running by March. Goal number five was to update the general plan housing element. The preliminary draft housing element was approved by the city council. We have a public information workshop scheduled for tomorrow in this room at 3 o'clock. We'll be submitting to HCD, following the final council approval at the February 5 meeting. So we're moving forward on that, should be done pretty soon. And then we've got to get ready for the next, the next update, which is coming very quickly. Goal number six was a contract with a traffic engineer. The city contracted with Tri-Lakes Consultants, and specifically Brad Brophy. Brad is now our city engineer. Goal number seven was to bring on a grants consultant. WRCOG has a grant assistance program that is offered to member cities at no cost. So we identified that program as a cost-effective way to track and apply for grant opportunities. Also, we've utilized our planning director and planning consultant to apply for the SB 2 grant funding, which we hope to hear back from them on that one any day now. Goal number eight was to enhance the relationship with the POA. I think we've come quite a way on this one. We've held three joint city council POA board meetings, addressed a number of issues, including the speed limit on the lake issue. The stormwater SSO protocol has been updated. Website language relative to water quality has been revised. We've had productive discussions at monthly roundtable meetings, which the POA has been attending regularly. I had lunch just today with the POA general manager, Eric, to go over a number of issues that we've been working on, so I think this relationship is positive and very strong now. Goal number nine was to build positive regional relationships. Staff at council has really been doing a good job this past year, getting out into the community. We've been regularly attending California, leave California cities functions, WRCOG functions. We've developed a diplomatic outreach program. We're regularly hosting visitors to the city in areas that are important to us. Just last week, we had county flood control and water conservation district out, gave them a tour of the city, took them out on the lake, showed them the outfalls and storm drains, and they're helping us with our MS4 compliance, just an example of how we're using the program. And I think we're, you know, we're meeting regularly with elected officials in surrounding cities. Also, I'd like to say there's a really good group of city managers in this region, and we have lunches occasionally and all kind of help each other out, and it's been, it's been very helpful. So I think in a lot of ways, we're making strides with building regional relationships. Goal number 10 was to add residential rentals and/or short-term vacation rentals to the business license program. We did a lot of research on this topic over the past year, and as we discussed tonight, the council just adopted the single-family residential rental registration, inspection, and crime-free rental housing program. That's a mouthful. I think from now on, we'll just say the rental registration program. And of course, we just talked about the urgency ordinance on the short-term rentals. We talked about, goal number 11 was to establish an internship program. We pivoted a little bit on this one in 2019. We discovered the WRCOG fellowship program. We had a fellow actually the previous year, but that, we were not slated to have a fellow in 2019. Made a deal with WRCOG, and we got a fellow, Megan, who's doing a fantastic job for us. Because of all the new programs, we're getting ready to bring online. We're currently evaluating the needs of the office and proposed changes to staffing, including any fellowship. the needs of the office, and proposed changes to staffing, including any fellowship or internship programs will be presented at that mid-year budget review next month. Goal number 12 was to secure the BLM land for economic development. We submitted an official request this year to acquire the land through direct purchase process, submitted to the BLM. We've had meetings with the BLM, with Congressman Ken Calvert, Supervisor Kevin Jeffries, with RCA, with potential developers like Diversified Pacific. And we have a big meeting scheduled on February 20th with all stakeholder agencies, all those agencies that I, that I mentioned above, including, I think, California Fish and Wildlife. So that we can get everyone around the table and start to strategize and what, what needs to be done there. This is, continues to be probably a several-year process. It's a little bit of a longer play, but the ball is officially rolling on this now. So, we feel pretty optimistic that even though it'll take a little bit of time, ultimately, I think this is going where we need it to. Goal number 13 is to update the general plan or zoning ordinance. This continues to be something that we really need to do, however, it's just kind of pending funding. So, we'd, we'd like to do it when the money's there to do it, but it's not an inexpensive undertaking, and it's not just drafting a plan, you got to do all the environmental work that comes with that, so a lot of costs associated. However, we have applied for the SB2 funding, which could be approximately $160,000 of grant money to the city. If we get it, we're contemplating potentially doing a specific plan for the town center with that money. The $160,000 probably wouldn't cover the entire specific plan, we'd probably have to supplement some with the, the general fund, but certainly would get us a good chunk of the way there. Goal number 14 was to consider moving the city council chambers upstairs when the library leaves us. We received, to our surprise, we received a letter from the county a couple of weeks ago requesting an, an extension of that lease for one more year. So it looks like they'll be with us through the end of 2020. So we recommend that we keep thinking about this, but consider making it a goal next year in 2021. Goal number 15 was to update the inventory of city assets. This goal has been complete. Goal number 16 was to develop and adopt a filming ordinance. This one has been tabled just because other things have come in at a higher priority. This is something that came up for discussion right around the time we were doing the goal setting last, last May, but everything else has just been, been more critical. Goal number 17, review standing committees. This is complete. Standing and ad hoc committees were reviewed and updated at the December city council meeting. And the final goal, number 18, was to put on city-sponsored movie and market nights. This is still something we'd like to do. We, we tabled it for 2019. We're looking at, as, as we'll talk about upcoming goals, we are looking at beefing up the events the city puts on, so this is something we'd like to consider. But again, 2019 was very busy, so this one ended up being tabled for 2020. So now on to 2020. List of 14 possible goals that, that staff has identified, it's kind of our best guess, based on our discussions with, with each of you and the work we've done over the past year, of what we think the council's priorities might be. And when we get through the list of 14, absolutely welcome any other, any other ideas for goals, and we can discuss those and add those to the list. And we'll get started here. The first one is the same that was number one in 2019. We need to continue addressing our budget deficit situation primarily through our public safety contracts. Proposed goal number two is to implement our EMS subscription program. That is really going to be key for us this year. Going to take quite a bit of work. Our next step is the fee study. Our timeline on this is that we need to be prepared to submit the, the list to the county by August, and so we have basically between now and August to do the fee study and to figure out collection, which we're in discussion with CRNR currently on that. So this is going to be key for us this year, rolling this program out. Number three is implementing our residential rental program. Number four, implement the life safety inspection program. Number five, renegotiate our trash hauling franchise agreement with CRNR. Six, move economic development initiatives forward, examples of that being the BLM land, town center specific plan, identification of developable parcels, attracting new business, and looking at how we're investing our money. An example of investments that we have in mind is, you know, real, potential real estate opportunities, as opposed to, for example, just having everything in the bank or in life. Number seven, digitize our files and move the service to the cloud. Number eight, expand communications and public engagement efforts. Number nine, protect water quality through compliance with MS4 permit requirements. This is one that we're going to be talking a lot about over the next couple of months as our MS4 permit requirements have become more clear to us. We've been working with county flood control and water conservation district, we've been talking with the water quality control board, and this is something that we're probably going to mention again next month at our mid-year budget report too, because we're going to have to devote some resources to what the state is requiring us to do in terms of water quality here. Number 10, complete the housing element update. We're almost there. I think another couple of months and we'll finally be complete with that process, and then we start the next cycle. Number 11, maintain positive relationships with the POA. We have come a long way with this, this year, in 2019. I think we need to stay the course there, but to keep this on our radar or something, to looking for opportunities to continue developing that positive relationship. Continue building positive regional relationships. Begin contemplating long-range visioning and strategic planning. This is one that I went back and forth on whether or not I should include on this list because it's not something measurable, and it's not something that we're going to be able to check off in 2020. We have a lot of projects coming, and we have a lot of ideas. And a lot of them have to do with potential future development, either on the BLM land or finding developable parcels along Railroad Canyon Road. But really kind of these, most of these ideas have been done piecemeal by themselves, and I think at some point, we really need to start doing some longer-term visioning. We might want to go through the process of doing a strategic plan for the city of Canyon Lake. It's a major undertaking. We're going to have an awful lot on our plate in 2020. Probably this, this will end up being a big push in 2021, but something that I want us to start thinking about in everything we do this year to, to do it, keeping in mind that we really need to put together an overall vision, where, who do we want to be when we grow up in 20, 30, 40 years from now. And lastly, put on successful events. Veterans Day is, is a big event in this, that the city puts on every year, and I think this year, we want to do it bigger and better than, than has been done before. The Winter Wonderland event was a big success this December. We've got a lot of positive feedback, so we'd like to double down our efforts there. And this year, 2020, is the 30th anniversary of Cityhood. So actually, December 1st is the actual date of the corporation, so we would like to host a 30th anniversary gala slash state of the city event on December 1st. It's a Tuesday. Talk with the POA. That date is usually a POA board meeting day. Eric is going to talk with their board and see if they wouldn't mind rescheduling that so that we can involve the POA in that event, have it at the lodge at the Holiday Babe Room, and put on a big, a big gala for, for our 30th anniversary. So those are the goals that staff has come up with, and we would certainly be interested in hearing anything that you would like to, to bring up or, or add to the list.
I have one.
Okay.
I think we need our own zip code. Probably not a small ask, but I think definitely part of being a city is having our own zip code, and I think we need it.
Okay.
Zip code.
I'll get Stephen right on that.
I do think that we need a strategic plan. We really do need a roadmap of what the future's going to be. I know it entails a lot of work, but we need something to provide the direction for the future. So, I know that maybe we can roll it in towards the end of the year, but it's very important. I mean, to, for long-range planning, making them close objectives, we need to have that plan.
Any public comments?
I have no comments.
Thank you.
One of the goals that, you know, I know we tried to push last year, and it's been, it's been difficult, you know, you had mentioned, Chris, the internship program. In itself, that's an entire job. I mean, I used to do that, and it's, it's a lot when you're managing two, three, four interns and getting them on. You know, in February, you had mentioned that we're going to kind of reevaluate some staffing needs. You know, we're blessed because a lot of the special events take place around the same time. So maybe if we look at catering an internship program around, you know, those special events as well, because I think all hands on deck is really going to help us out. I know, speaking from experience, being an intern myself when I was in college, those resources that we give to, to kids, to, to young adults is huge. And at City Hall, we can, you know, provide that knowledge and hopefully push young people in the direction of government, kind of be the platform. I know I can't paint on it, and I think it's important that we try to implement that. So for me, I would love to, you know, have a nice checkmark next to 2020 saying that we actually have an established internship program here in Canyon Lake, and where kids can come back during the summer, or during, while they're at school and enroll in a three month program, or whatever it might be, where we have an office location for them, a place to sit, and they can actually learn local government and learn about some of these agenda items that we put forth. So for me, that's, that's, that's a really important goal that I would love for us to be able to complete in 2020.
Okay. It, it's something that we've talked about a lot internally as staff, and I think you're right. I think, I think we can find a way to do it around, the end of the year is going to be very busy with, with all these events. I think part of our challenge in, in 2019 with the concept is, is that we really don't have a lot of lower-level busy work. And so what, what I, what I didn't want to have happen, you know, I've got staff firing on all cylinders, and what I didn't want to have happen is to bring in interns that then became more work for the existing staff, and, and then not really having legitimate work for them and having to try to come up with things to have them do, and it being more work than it was really worth. And I still don't think we, we have the capacity to, to do a lot of that. Now maybe, we have talked about that it might make sense to have an internship program where we bring in one intern, and that intern, especially this year when we're going to be moving to, to digitizing all our files, there's a lot of scanning work that can be done, so that's something that would be fantastic for an intern to help with, and as you mentioned, as we're, we're moving towards these events. But a lot of the work that we're envisioning is higher-level work. We thought, well, you know, we need to do a better job, for example, with communications and social media, and posting on the website and writing articles, and maybe that's something we have an intern do. Problem there too is writing and, and, and having some kind of political savvy and, and knowing what's appropriate and what isn't, and then being reliable, knowing that someone's going to be there or will need them to be. We just kind of felt that you might get lucky and get an intern that, that is all of those things, but probably not. And if we're going to turn over the keys to over the city's, you know, social media passwords and those things, we want to know it's someone that isn't just volunteering, basically. So, we, we've, we've, we haven't ignored it, we, we've, we've talked about it, we've struggled with it, we've tried to figure it out. But I, I like, I like where you're going in terms of this, this coming year and the events that we have coming up, and with our, with our digitization, I think there could be an opportunity to start, to maybe start with one intern and, and have very set responsibilities for them, and, and see where it goes from there.
You know, what, what you had mentioned, and we've, we've, I think done a good job with this, is, is continue to build positive regional relationships. And what's so successful about internship programs throughout Riverside County, cities as a whole, WRCOG, is the ability to take that intern and then put them somewhere. And that's what's so nice about educating, whether it's a young person or not, anyone who's looking for the opportunity, but being able to hire within, or at least be able to refer within to another city and, and find a place for these folks. You know, what a lot of people don't know and understand if they haven't worked in government, is there's so many amazing opportunities within local government, and to be able to learn those processes, and that's why I'm so passionate about it. And I understand, you know, the management side of it, Chris, I completely get that, and it's, it's a lot to take on, but I think Canyon Lake is the perfect fit for it, because, you know, we are family, we come together, and I know a lot of parents out there were excited about that opportunity to have their kid come back for the summer and to be able to learn about local government. So if we can make it happen, that would be huge. But again, a, as a council member, I saw you guys work your butts off during these events, and coming from an office where we had 12, 15 interns, and I see what can be done when you have people willing to help, you know, it makes a huge difference, and they're getting something out of it as well. They're learning how to organize event, learning how to have a conversation with a vendor, and how to build that relationship and to help them out. And those are important characteristics that I hope we as a city can, you know, build around and, and make happen. I'm not trying to add more work to you guys, but I, I do think that it's an important element, you know, for the city, so I'll leave it at that.
Several years ago, Tim Brown was our mayor. Thought it was a hundred. We tried putting a program together to involve the youths here in, in Canyon Lake, and we just kind of stumbled. We really didn't know what to decide, you know. We were, believe it or not, we were a lot smaller than, than we are now. We found out that the few things that we did try just got in the way. But if there's a program that's, you know, dedicated to that, where somebody can train them, I think it's a wonderful idea, it's certainly worth a try again. So, those are my comments, and thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, then I guess we're going to move on to the public here.
Actually, if...
Oh, that's all right.
That's okay. We would like to officially adopt the goals, so...
Oh, excuse me.
That's okay. We have the goals that staff presented here, and, and then in addition to that, pursuing a zip code for the city of Canyon Lake, and establishing an internship program were the two additions that I heard. So unless anyone would like to make any additions or subtractions or changes, our recommendation is that city council adopt the goals for the 2020 calendar year as presented and agreed upon during the discussion on this.
Before we, we move forward, I just got one quick question. Mr. City Attorney, anything, anything that you think, you know, I mean, what's nice about having you is, is you, you come from a background, you know, with a different city, a very large city, and Chris and Mike and Anna, they got a phenomenal job putting together some of these goals, and anything that you want to add to the, the table that you've seen that maybe in the direction, maybe from a legal perspective, or maybe, you know, some things that, that we should maybe concentrate on, because now's the time to do it, I would love to kind of hear your insight.
I, I really appreciate that. I can tell you that one of the benefits of the city manager that you've chosen was that he involved me in the preparation for his proposed goals. So my feedback was actually taken into account...
Perfect.
...when he put those up to you, so I actually don't have any separate recommendations than what is being presented by the city manager, and I really appreciate him reaching out to me to involve me in that process. Thank you, Chris.
Awesome. Good job, guys, seriously, appreciate this, this is good stuff, so shows we're moving in the right direction. I'll make the motion.
Second.
This is a motion to approve ordinance number 193.
No.
It's the, it's the...
Business item number 11.
Uh...
It's the goals.
I'm sorry.
I'll make the motion to approve business item number 11, consideration of the 2020 city council goals.
I'm a second.
We have a motion and a second.
Thank you, we can do an all in favor.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carried. Since we're moving into the public hearings now, this is the second reading of the fire code update.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a second reading, and it appeared for first reading on your agenda in, in December. This is adopting the 2019 fire code as amended.
Okay, well, we're going to open this, we're going to open this public hearing at 8:21. We have a staff presentation.
I believe that was my presentation.
It was.
It was.
There are no changes to the version in front of you from what you saw in the first reading.
Okay, thank you.
And just to clarify to the mayor and council, the reason why the second reading is coming to you in January is because we didn't incorporate all the changes that were requested by the Riverside County Fire Department, occurred at the end of last year.
City Council, have any questions of staff? Have any testimony by proponents? Opponents? There's no response then. I'm closing the hearing at 8:22. Any discussion by the council? No. There's no tabulation required. So we need a motion in a second to approve the second reading of this ordinance.
I make a motion to adopt resolution...
190.
190.
I second.
Clarification, ordinance number 190.
Ordinance 190.
Thank you.
I second that. Okay, we need a vote go ahead, please.
Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Crowns?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the second reading of ordinance number 190.
Thank you. 13 is a resolution. Is this another public hearing?
Yes.
It is, I'm sorry. Forgot to do that. The time is 8:23.
Do you need mayor, city council?
Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt you.
I'm ready for you.
Your turn. Okay. All right. Last but not least, staff has recommended City Council to hold a public hearing and approve resolution 2020-04 for approval of the applications from Hope and the city of Canyon Lake for the allocation of the city's fiscal 2021 community development block grant funding. So in October of 2019, excuse me, city staff issued a public notice calling for nonprofit agencies to submit applications for 2021 C B G funding. The city received one application only, and that was from Hope, as typically we do every year. It's for the same program, their battery program. In addition to that, we're, staff is asking for the continues to the already approved ADA accessibility project for allocations to go to that project. So staff's recommendation is to approve the fiscal 2021 C B G funding, which is estimated to be at around $21,000, of which Hope will receive about $3,150, which is 15% of the total allocation, and the rest of the remaining amount would go to the ADA accessibility project, which is approximately $17,850. By adding that to the already additional funding that's been set aside for that, it puts us somewhere around close to about $43,000 in funding towards the ADA project. Questions?
Yeah, Mike, we've talked helping hands in the very time, many times.
Yes.
What's the status now?
They did not submit an application because they're pretty much in the same status as they were before. They haven't, they don't meet the qualifications for C B G funding through the county. Again, part of the process is for them to already have been approved through county in order for them to receive C B G funds through us. So unfortunately, they haven't done that yet, and nor did they submit an application.
Do they know what they need to do?
We've gone that over several times. Yes, we've met with them. I've had the county sit down with them to explain to them what exactly they need to do, so I think we've kind of explained pretty much what they, exactly what they need to do.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Bonner, I was in on those meetings, so we, I mean, I got to hand it to Mike. Cast goes off to Mike, because he just kept on trying and trying and trying, and helping hands was great, too. They took the appointments. They did everything they possibly could. So I would say for a strong year, what did you say, Mike, last year?
Yeah.
Every month, we were easily meeting with them, doing everything we could, and they said, you know, we're just not, we can't do it. So I just want to say thank you for all the hard work on it, because I know how difficult this has been, and you found a good thing that we need to use these funds for for the city, so I really appreciate all the hard work on this.
Of course. I have a question. Based on the ADA funds, will that bring our facility up to the ADA requirements? We don't know that just yet, because we don't know the exact cost of all the different projects listed in the report. Okay. So until we do that, and we get sort of an estimate on what that entire cost would be, yeah, we're not sure just yet. The county doesn't necessarily require us to complete those projects in a short period of time. It's something that can be completed over the years, and every year we can be adding C B G funding to that project in order to get it completed, so... But to answer your question, we don't have cost estimates yet on the full report to determine what that would be. Thank you, Mike.
We have any proposals? Opponents? I'm going to close the hearing at 8:27. Any further discussion by the council? We have a motion, second, to approve resolution number 2020-04.
I move second.
We have a motion in a second. This requires a roll call.
Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Crowns?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve resolution number 2020-04.
Thank you. City manager, do you have any comments?
Just a couple of short ones I think I've talked about tonight. As the council knows, we've been in the process of transitioning from our previous IT company to our new company. Our new company is Syntec. We've been very pleased so far. As you also know, we were caught up in a ransomware attack that happened, well, it happened on the 23rd of December. We became aware of it on the 24th of December. And first of all, I just want to publicly commend Minister of Services and Manager Mike Borhaugh and our new IT company, Syntec, for jumping on this thing right away. We were fortunate in that, you know, our offices were closed on the 24th, but our accountant, Kayla, happened to come into the office. She was working, she's a, we consult with the company she works for, so they did not have the day off, so she came in to get some work done and saw some funny-looking things on her computer. And so she took a screenshot, sent it to Mike, and Mike recognized what was going on right away and contacted our new company, Syntec. And had they not jumped on it and caught it as quickly as they did, it could have really been a problem for us. And so they were on it on Christmas Eve. On the day after Christmas, Mike and I were at the office. Syntec came out, they assembled three or four people, they said, including the president of the company, came out. Our previous IT service provider, we would call India and be lucky if we got a response. So they got the problem solved. They were able to restore all of our data using a backup on our servers that had happened previous to the attack. They were able to clean all the, in addition to our server, we had six computer workstations that were infected. Those were cleaned. We ended up not losing any data. It ended up costing us nothing. And so we couldn't be happier with the new company. Not only is the local service receiving much better, we're paying about $1,000 a month less than we were with some... Yeah, so we're happy about that. As we've talked about this evening, next month, we'll be coming to you with mid-year budget review. One thing I want to kind of prepare you for ahead of time is that with all of these new programs the city is starting, we're going to have to, well, staff is going to be recommending some staffing adjustments. I think we're going to be seeing a significant amount of revenue coming in from some of these programs that will cover the, more than cover the costs of the staffing adjustments we're going to be recommending, but we just, in order to execute these programs, we need the staffing levels to get those done. So I'm meeting with our Fed Secretary, Shamar, to start working on those numbers, and I think we'll have something good to present to you on February 5th. And that is all I have this evening.
Thank you. Council reports. Will you start with Councilmember Bonner?
Well, I just want to talk about quickly about the traffic relief plan. It's anybody that lives in Riverside County should be paying attention to this. It took two four-hour meetings at the R C D C, which all the cities are attending and all the supervisors are attending. And we finally, not unanimous, but we got the draft forward to, for the next six months to ask the public to get their opinion back, okay? And the important thing is that if this thing goes through the way it is, and they're talking about the Riverside County only money for transportation, $8.8 billion over the next 30 years, and there would be a half cent increase with the measure, or sales tax in Riverside County. So we need to make sure that all our residents of Riverside County, because it's going to take two-thirds to approve it, to make it effective or not. So we need to pay attention to that. I talked to Chris this morning. We made, when we have a joint P O A meeting, might be a good opportunity to have this come up and explain what this whole thing is about. There's going to be many public presentations on this in the last six months, but we have to decide by June to bid on the ballot for November. So it's going to, six months is going to go pretty fast. So I hope everyone will pay attention to that and follow it and see if it's something we want to do and have the sales tax increased by another half cent, okay? And then the next roundtable is February 10th. I think, February 10th.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Castillo?
I don't have much to say, other than I was honored to participate in the joint meeting with the P O A and the Water District. I thought it was very, very fruitful, so a part of the next meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Ayton?
Yeah, I got a little bit to report. Since I'm back on the R C A, we met. We do have an interim director right now, which created quite a bit of discussion, because they did put out for a director, because the director left in December, as well as the number two in command. She left prior to, but has consented to come back on an interim basis, and she is tasked with recruitment for that position, which should start in March. I've also been reappointed to the executive board of the R C A, which I was on before, and they had to go back through it. A lot of things are coming down, fuels management, especially open space management, as it deals with Cal Fire, R C A, U S Forest Service, because right now the fuel loads and fuel management issues are big, and they're getting bigger every day. We've got maps that are identified that have the critical zones. We happen to have several in our area, so they've got them in three different shades, red being the highest. And so that's going to be one of the goals this year, because it looks like we're going to have significant moisture, which will add to the fuels. The fuels are getting hotter, flashier, meaning they burn quicker. So our fire loads and situations have gotten to extreme very quick. We also look like we're going to have the bloom this year again. And one of the things that Lake Elsor and the R C A and the county are working on a contingency plan for management when it becomes bloom time, which is, believe it or not, will be next month. So with that, that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Busy season for most of us, Christmas, New Year's. Met with the R T A, and like Larry had mentioned, a lot of changes going on in R C A, same with us. We were actually pleased to re-up our leader, Larry Rubio. I know most of you know him on the council. He's a phenomenal guy, so we renewed his contract with R T A. We're excited to have him at the head of the organization. Also, just want to say thank you so much to the staff and all the hard work on our Winter Wonderland. It was unbelievable. I think everyone attended, and it was, it went off, in our opinions, it was just absolutely amazing. All the families coming out, and I think for, you know, teaming up, I know Casey did a lot of work on that, too, reaching out with different organizations. So I just want to say thank you so much and looking forward to 2020. I can't believe the city's been established for 30 years, and we get to be a part of that as well. So we've got a lot of good stuff going on, and we have a great team in place, so I'm looking forward to a strong 2020. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, the month of December was pretty much a fun month for me. All the committees that I served on were dark. So I was kind of a playboy for that this month, but it started off with the tree lighting and the Winter Wonderland, as Councilmember Smith said, was fantastic, and really thanks to the Family Matters Club. Well, I don't think we could have gotten to that without Casey for all of your help. It was really a great event, and I've seen a few of them before, so I can tell you, this was the best. And I went to the student of the month, and of course, that's always been one of my favorite meetings. Fortunate enough to see this young lady that was just here this evening. Her bio is even longer than the one that she talked about, but I wasn't going to add to it. She had enough on her. We had a Veterans Day meeting, and I want to commend Mike Borja. There was a little bit of a misunderstanding at the meeting, but Mike simplified everything, made it quite enjoyable. Everybody was happy, and I think most of the members are going to be returning, and we're looking forward to the Veterans Committee again this year. On not quite as a fun note, but a little more of a solemn note to Councilmember, I should say Mayor Proton Castillo and myself, along with my wife, we attended the blue light ceremony downtown Riverside, which is always a, well, I'm not sure what the adjective would be to describe this event, but it fazed tribute to all of the fallen members of the various police, fire, border patrol, whatever, public safety officers who were lost in the line of duty since 1892, I believe it is. Hopefully, it doesn't grow too much larger. And we had an office party, which was successful. I think everybody enjoyed that. And I attended the P O A board meeting this past week, a short period of time, and of course, the joint meeting, which everybody here is raved about, and I know that they're going to get better. So it's been a, it was a very good year. I think Frank Sinatra said that in a song one time, and I'd like to repeat it, and I know 2020 is even going to be a better year, so I'm looking forward to all the aggressive things that the city manager has planned for us this year, and I hope to keep up with you. And with that, I will adjourn this meeting at 8:39, and to remind everybody that the next City Council meeting is February 20th. Thank you all.